Commissioners, are you back with us? Commissioner Treese, Vice Chair Willie, Commissioner Phi, Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome, everyone. We are reconvened in our work session meeting of Tuesday, February 15th. We're moving on to our next agenda item, which is the State Legislative Session Update. And we'll turn it over to our Government Relations Team. We have Paige Spence and Erin Doyle here with us today. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. For the record, I am Paige Spence, one of your Government Relations Managers, and I'm glad to kick off our presentation today. My colleague Erin Doyle and I are trying to continue the conversation that we had with your board last week, providing status updates of policy and budget issues that are still on the table in this relatively smooth, short legislative session. And as always, we will follow the legislative updates for the quick review of the session timelines. And today, I think we will even be able to give you back some of the time out of our scheduled 60 minutes. So first, if we could advance the slides, please, Kevin. We will, as I mentioned, cover legislative updates and then the timeline. So we can go ahead and advance that slide again. And we'll start with the session updates and beginning with my portfolio. So, next slide again, please, Kevin. Thank you. So Chair and Commissioners, I, again, as last week, do not have any action items for you today. This is going to be informational only, but of course, I'm glad to take questions. The overarching theme for this week is that this is Ways and Means time, meaning that a lot of the bills and budget items have moved out of their policy committees and are in joint Ways and Means, where they will then have the necessary funding attached to them to carry out the policies that the bills are intended to put into place. So hopefully, we'll have some movement next week. But because the joint Ways and Means process takes some time, we're kind of in a bit of a holding pattern this week. But just to remind you of the issues that we're tracking this session. First, for Behavioral Health, leading with House Bill 4004, which is our Behavioral Health Association's top priority for session. This is the bill to provide grants to behavioral health providers to retain and recruit our workforce. And we have a really strong champion in Washington County Senator Kate Lieber, who co-chairs Joint Ways and Means Human Services. And then the opioid settlement is the second issue under Behavioral Health, also in Ways and Means. This is the bill required to stand up the state fund and the decision-making body to allocate funds going to the state from the National Opioid Settlement for Substance Use Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery Services across the state with a pot of just short of $150 million. We are working on one technical amendment, but this bill is in pretty good shape to pass. So it'll just be a matter of time. Turning to Public Health, similar theme, Ways and Means, Ways and Means, just waiting for the budget process to really begin in earnest. Under the COVID-19 Response Funding, this is that $50 million package we talked about last week, with about half going to local public health authorities and the rest for community-based organizations, tribes, and farm workers. And these are costs that are not eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Marie Bowman-Davis, our local public health administrator, and I are meeting with Senator Elizabeth Steiner Hayward, M.D., who is, of course, Washington County's own legislator and also the co-chair of Joint Ways and Means. So we'll be having conversations with the senator to shore up support for this needed funding. And then also nested under Public Health, we have racial equity. Specifically, this is House Bill 4052, which is a follow-up to the 2021 Legislature's Declaration that Racism is a Public Health Crisis. The bill provides pilot program grants for mobile health units to serve priority populations and also convenes affinity group task forces to develop recommendations to address needs and health inequities faced by BIPOC communities and tribes. And this bill passed unanimously out of committee with bipartisan support. And then finally, again, this is really a public health issue, but also a workforce issue and a community support issue, early childhood funding. This is around $100 million package still, which is embodied for workforce development and rate increases and agency funding to increase access both to childcare and to preschool. And we'll be discussing this ask as well with Senator Steiner Hayward, when Marie and I meet with her next week. We can advance to the next slide, please. Thank you. So now we're turning over to Housing Services and Community Development. All of the four items under the Addressing COVID-19 Challenges are budget items that are not yet tied to any specific bill number. I do want to point out, in addition to the Governor's $400 million package, our cities within our jurisdiction and some other cities around the state are additionally pursuing another $50 million for homelessness response, focusing on habitability and sanitation. The amount for homelessness response in the Governor's $400 million package is only $500,000. And so kind of inspired by, you'll recall that we applied to be at a pilot program for city-county homelessness response. We were unfortunately not selected for that pilot program, but because our cities want to be good partners in providing some of the infrastructure and support to support our homeless neighbors and residents, we'll be lending support to our city partners, especially if we return in Hillsborough as they allocate for dollars and working in coalition with other cities for these funds. And then, of course, we have Project Turnkey 2.0. This is a $50 million ask for 10 projects, $15 million for emergency rental assistance for affordable unit renters, and then $1 million to operate 211 around the clock. Additionally, the bill and associated budget item that Comey Calibor, our Housing Authority Director, has really been leading policy discussions on with preservation for affordable housing. These are both in Ways and Means, and we're having good conversations with the Legislative Fiscal Office, getting into some of the details about how we would use rental assistance subsidy dollars to maintain affordability for the tenants at the WoodSpring Building in Tigard. And then, last but not least, under Housing and Community Development, this weather event resiliency we talked about, so both providing tenant protections and heat domes and as well in very cold weather events. Still very popular concepts. We've got Senate Bill 1536, which allows renters to install portable units in their apartments, like window units, which are restricted in some cases. And then the companion bill, House Bill 4058, allocates $5 million to actually provide emergency air conditioners to residents at risk of heat events. And those are both, of course, in joint Ways and Means. And if we could advance to the next slide, please, Kevin. Thank you. Chair and Commissioners, we have similar sort of state of affairs with general government, which I'm glad to have been picking up for Jajee, who was, of course, no longer with the county, but did provide some great context for me to continue to pick up this work. As you'll recall, first, your board voted to oppose as written House Bill 4140, which is a huge expansion of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, so far having good productive meetings with our delegation, and are just wanting to continue those this week. And then similar, we're tracking House Bill 4147, voting rights for incarcerated felons. And then there is a new concept in Senate Bill 1514. This is around, we talked about bonuses and retention bonuses and other programs to retain our workforce and behavioral health. Senate Bill 1514 has been just sort of a placeholder workforce bill that we have now been able to work with Senator Kathleen Taylor. She put in some components that our H.R. Director here, Eva Labonte, is very supportive of. That would allow us to sort of extend this kind of bonus to workers in other departments without running afoul of pay equity. And this is sort of a technical fix bill for local governments and small employers in advance of a larger conversation, refining the pay equity policies likely to come up next year in the 2023 session. So on 1514, we are expecting some amendments and further development of this policy, which, again, our H.R. Team is supportive of. So I just wanted to flag it for now. We'll provide more information as that concept develops further. And with that, if we could please advance to the next slide. I'm glad to turn the conversation over to my colleague Erin Doyle.
Before I start, are there any questions for Paige related to the bill she covered or any other issues within her portfolio?
Thank you, Erin.
I'm seeing nothing happening. I will go ahead and jump in. Also, we kind of left Jajee's section together, but just changed the names at the top. I am now covering Public Safety for the county. So I just wanted to provide some updates related to the bills that Jajee had discussed with you last week. The first is Senate Bill 1510, which is the Omnibus Public Safety Reform Package. That bill was amended and passed down to the Ways and Means, and we are still reviewing the final gut and stuff amendment essentially for ramifications for Washington County and the work that we do. But we believe that we are still good enough with the bill at this point in time. It should have incorporated the issues related to the justice reinvestment programs that we needed as a county to make sure that our resources were sufficient and not pulling us in the wrong direction financially. So down in Ways and Means, of course, is how it has to get paid for, and hopefully, that will be part of the overall Ways and Means conversation. You will hear me say Ways and Means a lot in these next few slides. So, sorry, but that's where they said pretty much everything. The next bill was Senate Bill 1584. Your board had a conversation about the potential fiscal impacts because, as originally drafted, it could have held the county liable for wrongful conviction payments. Senate Bill 1584 was amended pretty significantly, and it is now very clearly a state action that is being undertaken by those seeking renumeration for their wrongful convictions. It will be a state fund that pays for those, and it is a case against the state. Therefore, counties are no longer on the hook. Our DAs are no longer on the hook. Our sheriffs are no longer on the hook, according to how the bill is amended. So we will remain now neutral on this bill as it has no specific impact to the county or county function. Finally, Senate Bill 1511, the board has taken a position of oppose unless amended due to the significant potential financial impacts to the retroactive Ramos provisions that were included in the original bill. There was a series of amendments that were incorporated into a single amendment that was passed late yesterday afternoon. We are going through the ramifications of what that will do to the fiscal impact because they did narrow the folks who are eligible for the relief related to being convicted on a non-unanimous jury to a specific subset of cases. However, we still aren't 100% certain how many cases that represents in Washington County. DA Barton is trying to see if there is an easy way to figure that out, but we are probably looking at a significant cost to our court system. But in addition to that, we've also had further conversations about something that is not clear from what I have read in the -8 amendment related to custody of those individuals and the impact that will have on our jail. In talking with AOC and others, as well as our sheriff, we are very concerned that folks who are petitioning to have their cases relooked at will be sent back down to the local jails as their cases are pending out of the Department of Corrections, where they currently are doing their sentencing, sentences. And that has an impact on the number of inmates that we can have housed effectively, looking at the size of our jail. So there are costs that we are analyzing as far as what potentially could occur at our jails, how many folks we would have to then push out to make room because these are probably folks that we cannot safely rim it back out to the streets and also how the electronic monitoring would work for those that we then have to push out. So it's a piling up of the fiscal impacts that we're trying to assess at this point in time. So I would recommend that we continue to oppose unless further amended so that the county is further protected from the financial impacts at all levels of this. And we have a clearer conversation about who is going to be responsible for housing and maintaining the work that has to be done through the DA's offices that the counties pay for to make sure that we can retry cases if they are eligible for retrial, going back potentially, you know, decades to find witnesses to undertake all of that and all of those sorts of things. So the fiscal impact remains likely quite significant and therefore, recommending that we continue to oppose until further amendments and resources are brought to bear. I'm going to stop on these public safety issues because they tend to generate some conversation to see if there are questions, and I will do my best to answer them at this point in time. So are there any questions of me? And I can't see everyone, so.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to put up my hand, but I haven't figured that out yet. The little button's not there. So is it okay if I jump in here? So I'd like to go back to Senate Bill 1584. I know that we moved from opposed to neutral on that, but I, once again, we are making that decision based on the fiscal impact. And since it doesn't impact us anymore, we say, well, okay, it's not. We shouldn't weigh in, and I disagree with that. This is going to be a significant cost to our state at some point in time. And our state is in, when the state is impacted financially, we are impacted financially. So I just think this is just a bad idea, and I think we should continue to oppose 1584. In regards to 1511, I am glad to see that we are continuing to oppose that. But again, we're making that decision based on a financial impact when really philosophically, I think we should have the conversation of whether or not we even agree with this concept. And so both of these, to me, do have financial impacts. I get that, but I'm trying not to just make a decision on the finances of something, whether or not I agree with it philosophically and I guess could agree with it even if it didn't impact us. I don't think that would be the case for me. But I think we should have those conversations to give you some direction for moving ahead.
So Commissioners, we have given direction to our staff previously based upon our principles, our goals, and objectives for this short session. This is an update to these three different public safety and justice bills as represented here. Commissioner Willie is suggesting that we change our position on Senate Bill 1584, specifically based upon a parameter that is, as I understand it, different than our current guiding principles, goals, and objectives for the short session. But this is the forum, the opportunity for such discussion in order to provide direction to our Government Relations Team members in a timely fashion, given the movement of the short session. So Commissioners Phi and Commissioner Treese, are there any other comments you wish to add?
I guess I'd like to hear it from both Paige and Erin. I'm sorry, I don't remember the construct of the piece that you mentioned, Chair. So what I've heard so far is Commissioner Willie say that the construct under the compensation for those wrongfully convicted was about whether or not it costs the county money. And I don't remember if that was our only construct for that decision. So Paige and Erin, can you help me with that?
If I recall correctly, and I will go back and double-check the conversation, honestly, a week in session is like a month in my brain. But the large concern in the conversation that you had with Jajee at the time was very much about what the financial, potential financial ramifications were related to the wrongful conviction laying in the foundational principles that this board has adopted as part of its overall state agenda related to unfunded mandates and costs that are out of our control that lead us into fiscally questionable waters as a county to take on those types of liabilities. And we did not ask this board to weigh in on the policy question related to renumeration for wrongful conviction. I will also just add here that there will be a cost to the state. They have done their fiscal impact statement. That is why it's down in Ways and Means, to determine if the state has the resources. I think the estimation is somewhere between $5 and $10 million for the state over time.
And to clarify, Commissioner Treese, I always revert to looking at our adopted state legislative agenda. And so that is the document that I have gone back to, and that is posted on our county website.
Okay.
Commissioner Phi, is there anything you'd wish to add?
No, I'm interested in more conversation as well.
I think if I could, again, just weigh in a little bit here. This is a little bit like, I think we're opening Pandora's Box here with this. I would be really surprised if the cost was only $5 to $10 million. I think we'll be, I think there'll be a lot of, at least, interest in this by those who believe they have been wrongly convicted. And so it will be up to us to see if they qualify, and I don't even know what that looks like. But it's a little bit like, because all of these decisions were made by a jury and a judge. And now there is question as to whether or not that was done correctly and certainly wrongly convicted. So the outcome was not positive. But the state is being handed the bill for decisions, correct or not, made by a judge and jury. And I just think that this is just a wrong place to be going. And I don't, and it's like, we could weigh in yes or no or neutral or whatever the case is, probably wouldn't have any difference, make any difference in the final outcome in legislature. But I do believe we should not be neutral on this. We should be negative. So, again, that's just my thoughts.
So Chair, since we've not had a conversation about what the meat, the substance of the bill is, I would like to just clarify specifically. For wrongfully convicted, the requirement is that the person seeking the remuner, those compensation dollars, thank you, they have to prove to a legal standard that is set in the bill that they are, in fact, innocent, that they were not guilty of the crime. And so this isn't a question of those that spent time related to a non-unanimous jury verdict, but in fact, that they are, in fact, not guilty of the crime for which they were imprisoned. And so that is why I think that the ceiling that is placed in the fiscal impact statement is there. The process by which that proof occurs will occur at the state court with the state's Attorney General's Office, taking up the duty to defend the state from the compensation claim. And so the arguments have to be made in the courtroom that should have been dispositive that the person was, in fact, innocent. So I think that's where they came up with the fiscal impact as related to both the number of employees they would need to monitor this program and then the potential payouts over time. It also sets a cap of the amount of payments based on the number of years someone who was found to be wrongly convicted was in prison and caps that payment by year. So that's the meat of the bill.
So I am comfortable with the staff recommendation to proceed with a neutral stance on this bill. And so that's my position. We've heard Commissioner Willie's recommendation that we oppose. So Commissioner Treese and Commissioner Phi, now is your time to weigh in.
I'm comfortable with the position the staff are recommending as well, neutral. And if we are going to change, I wanted to understand more and have more conversation with Erin to also understand more about the amendments that were made to the bill. But if you need a thumbs up or thumbs down, I'm okay with the neutral position we're in right now for this bill.
Chair, I quickly reviewed the legislative agenda. And if I were to change to oppose, I'd have to have more information, as Commissioner Phi said. And my main question would be around equity issues in relationship to compensation. And what does that look like in terms of, because we do call out in our statement and equity piece there. So I'm comfortable staying in the position that the staff recommends.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Board. I will, so noted, we will maintain a neutral position on 1584 at this period in time.
But may I ask, not now, but after the end of this short session, if we could have more information about what does that really mean in terms of what the implementation of compensation for those wrongly convicted from a societal point?
I will work with the organizations who can help with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. From here, I'd like to move on to the next slide if there's no further conversation on public safety. Hopefully, this is perhaps more good news. So just to create or provide some direct updates on the gain share extension, that bill still remains in Senate Finance and Revenue, not because of gain share, but because it is an omnibus tax package. And there is ongoing conversation about how to reform some other areas of tax law that are not related to any local government operations at this point in time. The statement at the end of yesterday's hearing was their desire to have finalized which amendments are moving forward. And they were kind of asked, where are you on all of the amendments? The resounding support from all five members of the committee was that they support the -1 amendment, which is our gain share extension, which is great news for us. So likely to see that rolled into what the rest of the omnibus package will be. From there, it would move to the Senate floor and then over to the House revenue. So we are starting to work our advocacy on the House side, where I think we will be facing a few more questions. And we are working through the process with our coalition partners to see if we can assure folks that all we are trying to do is make sure that we are financially sure of where we are going to be over the course of the next seven years, that we are not looking to pick policy fights or make choices that harm any other local jurisdiction. But this is really about providing that budget surety for ourselves and that this is good policy for the state moving forward. The other bill I wanted to update you on is Senate Bill 1545. This is the Governor's package for workforce investment. It is now moved down to the Ways and Means process. Again, there's those fancy words of how do we pay for everything? I wanted to provide a little bit more of a summary of what is in the package now that I've had a chance to go through the amended bill. So there are a number of programs that receive varying amounts of funds from our workforce boards, community-based organizations, state agencies, and others that will be receiving monies to turn into program work or grant opportunities, depending upon if it is a direct recipient, like a workforce board or community-based organization or a state agency that isn't directly doing workforce work. Heavy investment in the apprentice programs for our youth, investments in the wraparound services that folks like Work Systems, Inc. provide to folks who are really needing a lot of assistance in order to become workforce-ready, so not just getting them the job skills, but making sure that they can pay rent, pay for food, have healthcare, and all of those services that are necessary in order to be job-ready once you complete your workforce training. So it's a grand total package of $171 million in workforce services, programs, and projects that is going to focus That is going to focus on, um, some of those programs will focus on priority populations, which are defined as communities of color, women, low-income communities, rural and frontier communities, veterans, persons with disabilities, incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals, members of Oregon's nine federally recognized Indian tribes and individuals who disproportionately experienced discrimination in employment on the basis of age. But that is not the, the realm of who all can be serviced. Included in this bill is also the Prosperity 1000 program that has been floating in the ether of legislative concepts for about five years now, um, has been supported by Work Systems, Inc. as the workforce board provider to do some very serious work on behalf of folks who are very low on the income structure and really can use the help of all of the wraparound services that come with that. We continue to support this effort, um, are excited to see it down in ways and means and hope that the revenue forecast that was provided this last week that showed that the state has funding resources to really pay for some transformative work here in the workforce world. I will also say that the final piece of this is there is, they are calling for a consortium of employers and workforce development folks to work through the issues related to healthcare, manufacturing and technology sectors to examine and start sort of look at what programs we do need in addition to what's being invested in here to address those shortages in those particular industries. So that is the update on that. It's in ways and means and will become part of the overall structure of what bills come out of that and how much funding the state is putting forward. Next, I'm going to drop into two other bills that we have been supporting, um, that are business support programs. The first is the Economic Equity Investment Program. This is a program that would be stood up at Business Oregon to invest in community-based organizations that provide supports to those who have culturally specific and culturally appropriate skillsets to help individuals that are, um, are those that are disadvantaged individuals, family businesses and communities to provide work to assist them in their economic, um, the overall economic structures around each of those issues. So we have been supportive of this effort as part of the equitable investments in our community. We, um, our economic development team has reviewed this and think that this is an important investment in the community-based organizations that serve Washington County and serve those residents in very culturally specific ways. And we look forward for how we can better partner with them and coordinate it across as Business Oregon gets those resources out. The bill is now in ways and means. Uh, House Bill 4040 is, um, was proposed as a grant program for cultural organizations. Think theaters, art museums, those that have been significantly impacted by shutdowns related to COVID-19 over the last two years. Unfortunately, the bill itself did not make it out of committee, but the committee chairman stated that the intention is to wrap that financing into an overall economic development investment package down in ways and means in a bill yet to be identified. So we think that there's an opportunity to still see that investment. We are watching that carefully because we do know we have those cultural organizations in Washington County and want to make sure that we aren't duplicating efforts that the state could be making and making sure that those organizations have the ability to access those programs. That has been the focus of the economic development conversation there. With that, I will move on to the next slide unless there are questions. And make this one super short. Um, I got up this morning bright and early to talk through with the Home Builders Association, House Bill 4063. And we have come to the conclusion that trying to do intensely technical work in a short session continues to be a very big challenge. Um, so we believe that, um, so House Bill 4063 did move out of the Housing Committee and into rules yesterday to give us an opportunity to find to what that final draft of this bill will look like in a world that the land use and transportation side of Washington County and clean water services as a stormwater, um, uh, facility manager can live with in new subdivisions. And essentially, we have agreed to cut out all of the challenging pieces where we are working, we have been working to get those technical issues right. And instead are going to focus the bill on adding to the list of what is subject to a substantial completion standard includes off-site improvements. So that we aren't, so that developers aren't waiting for, um, private entities to move poles in order to move forward in their construction. This is something we think LUT has assessed as a livable. The other piece of it relates to when applications for building permits can go in to sort of do an overlap. And again, conversations with LUT, making sure that that aligns with everything else. All of the difficult conversations around stormwater have been removed from what we expect to see come out of the next amendment. Um, and then there are significant improvements to the study that is being proposed that is going to look at how we can better streamline the regulatory process, starting from state rules and land use permitting, building permitting, and all of the other permitting that occurs when we're trying to develop housing to make sure that local governments and the development community kind of have a shared understanding of why timelines are what they are and how we can better work together to get housing built more rapidly. Do you think the study is much better than when we started? That bill should then move down to ways and means after that amendment is drafted and moved out of rules. Probably sometime this week is our expectation, um, because they have to pay for the study. And finally, I will just note that House Bill 4118, um, it was a bill that we opposed because it just kind of takes the land use process and made it a jumble by allowing folks to go leapfrog the UGB if they're in urban reserves. That bill has died for the session. There was a proposed amendment that would have created a 31-person task force to look at urban growth boundary expansions as related to industrial and housing land. I think there was, there is interest at the legislative level to further that conversation. The task force, however, was not the means by which they wanted to do that. So I expect in the interim and moving forward, we will, we have to be actively engaged through our LUT participation with what the metro region conversation looks like, but also what the statewide conversation looks like related to both industrial lands and residential lands and the ability to develop those. I think that it is important for our LUD department that we're able to get through all of the rule changes that you all have to take up related to middle housing codes and other code amendments that are going to be required out of the state. So with that, I see Commissioner Teresa has her hand up, Chair, if you want to take back over.
Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
Thank you. Um, Erin, you, you mentioned the, the, I'm maybe, maybe I didn't get it. The 31-person task force that was in the, in the media, is that the one that we're talking about right now? Okay, that was, that's looking.
Yeah, so this was, would have been a legislatively, legislatively adopted task force that had 31 identified members. It didn't identify specifics, but got real close on some of the, the, what is in the media is something that is being put together by Senator Wyden, Governor Brown and Maria Pope from PGE just related to the semiconductor industry itself. Part of that will include a light conversation around industrial.
I did, I, I just wanted to make sure that there weren't the same one. Thank you.
Correct. This was, these are separate. Thank you for asking the clarifying question. Anything?
Thank you, Erin. I have a question. Um, this is actually an item that I meant to bring up earlier when we were in the budget discussion and I forgot. So, uh, something that you said here about, uh, land use reminded me of it. So, uh, the question I have to Ms. Angie, excuse me, uh, for another time, but I know I need to, to raise it. I'm wondering, what will it take? What direction do you need from the board in order to, uh, change the fiscal timing requirements for the collection of system development charges, SDCs, for developments levied by Washington County? And similarly for Ms. Taniguchi Dennis for Clean Water Services. What options does the board have or need to, direction that we might need to provide to each of our agencies for the consideration of, uh, collecting those at the time of occupancy as opposed to time of development? So I forgot to air that while Ms. Angie and Mr. Rhodes were presenting earlier. Thank you.
Um, uh, thank you. Um, I will also say that there is an SDC comprehensive report that is due to come out of the state legislative process. It got delayed in a bill that is moving through the process just because they needed enough time to actually work with their local government partners on that. So that may be a part of the, for, I will get that information when I have it out to the board.
So, so, uh, I didn't see anyone, any other commissioners with their hand raised for questions on this slide.
Excellent. Um, I'm glad to keep land use not as controversial as it normally is. And I will move on to the next slide, please. Um, so again, as usual, this is just a touch point in where we are on the calendars and the timeline for your GR team. So next slide, please. You can kind of see, because all of the cutting and pasting makes things very blurry sometimes. First chamber deadline was in fact yesterday. So that meant that they had to have held their work session and move the bill out of the, the committee, the policy committee and either to a committee that's open, such as rules or revenue for the remainder of the session, or ways and means for consideration, or else to the floor for a vote. The next big deadline that really calls down the herd of bills that Paige and I will continue to work on is on Friday when they have to post in the second session, in the second chamber, the work, bills that will be considered for work session for the remainder in those policy committees that do close. And their next deadline for getting those bills passed off the second floor is the 24th. In the meantime, revenue, rules and ways and means can continue to have those conversations as well as any other joint committee like joint transportation. However, joint transportation kind of sits on an unwritten rule of getting things done by that second chamber deadline as well. Just so that they can take the last week and a quarter or week and a half, I can totally divide by seven to try and get out of there by constitutional signing day, which remains March 7th at this point in time, a day in which GR will celebrate regardless. Um, so next slide, please. This is just an updated timeline. We took off all the past dates to clear it up a little bit. So we will be back before your board next Tuesday and the following Tuesday on the first. Then we will take a week off from updating you so that we can write a more comprehensive update to you and provide a final presentation of everything on the 15th of March. And then your GR team will take a breath. And then when we'll come back to you with a timeline in that 15th, uh, presentation about what our stage, our plans are for the rest of the year and preparing for, oh, you guessed it, the long session priority development process and all of the federal needs that we have to do in the meantime. So that is our work plan for the next two months. And we are trying not to look too far ahead of ourselves at this point in time out of sanity. With that, I'll go to the last slide and ask if the board has any further questions or if you would like to be double with GR for today.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments for our GR team members? So I see head nodding no from all three. Oh, now we have a hazed ran, raised hand from Commissioner Trese. Go ahead, Commissioner Trese, you're on mute.
I just want to say thank you. Uh, I, I, you guys are working hard and I know with just the two of you, it's, uh, it's, it's even harder. So I just want you to know how much I appreciate all the work and all the updates and, uh, just the perspective that you provide, certainly to me, in relationship to the whole. So, thank you.
It's our pleasure.
So Erin and Paige, uh, I have an item. As you know, we had some, some deadline-worthy appointments to the state legislature. And one of those was Representative Sosa to House Bill 30. He reached out to me today looking for further specifics about what Washington County is seeking, particularly with regard to finances. So I responded to his outreach today to assure him that our team members would be following up. I can well imagine that, uh, as he didn't have much preparation leading up to the convening of the short session, that he's really trying to play catch up with regard to our state legislative agenda and all of the, the range of bills that he's going to have to weigh in on. I just want to compliment you on your engagement with not only the full caucus, uh, and also leadership to help ensure that they are informed about, uh, our specific Washington County needs, but also to these newest members. I know it is quite a task. And I appreciate your efforts towards that end. It can certainly be a lot. Uh, and I think we've been very, very good about weighing in on bills that have effect to us as a county agency doing work on behalf of the community members here in Washington County and supporting our legislative delegation towards that end. While they grapple with the multitude and plethora of constituents and other folks who are trying to weigh in on the full plate that is before them and, and try to tell them how to do their jobs on every, every single bill that may be before them. So thank you very much for, for helping him as our newest member of the Washington County Caucus. And if you don't have his cell phone number, just let me know.
Thank you, Chair. We'll be sure to follow up.
And keep up the good work. Um, I heard a, a couple of folks intimate that, uh, they're concerned about a Republican walkout. I hope that doesn't happen, uh, because there is revenue that can and should be put into action to help our communities as we are facing continued pandemic impacts with COVID-19 and want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to thrive moving forward here in our community. So thanks. Keep up the good work and we'll see you, see you back here according to the dates that you've indicated, just next Tuesday, February 22nd.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners and leadership, we do have one more item for our work session this afternoon. Forty-five minutes. Ms. Angie, as far as I know, they're all staff members. So I'll just do a last minute check in to see if, uh, if we're trying to push through and be done with everything by 12:30-ish or, or if we should reconvene at 1 o'clock.
Well, there's an option. We can push through, uh, because the staff team is ready or the board can take a break and we can re, um, we can reconvene at a time that the board desires to do so.
Commissioners, what would you like to do? I'm totally neutral.
I'd vote for pushing through.
Yeah, I would probably, I'd probably agree with Pam on that. If, um, maybe take a little break right now for like 10 or 15 minutes or something like that and then push it. Then we'd be done by about 12:40 or something, which would, is that okay? I mean, I don't want to.
Commissioner Fie, you probably have some needs that I and others may not be aware of. So what, what do you need?
I would like a lunch at 12, but it sounds like the majority is in, I'll go with where everyone, but I do have commitment at 12 today.
Oh, well, there you go. So this is where speaking up is important. So. Alrighty, I support that. So we are expecting that we will reconvene back at 1 o'clock. You'll be all set on that, Commissioner Fie? Okay. Alrighty then. So we'll get our break, uh, and we'll reconvene for work session at 1 o'clock. We'll still be done earlier in the afternoon.
And we're going to use the afternoon Zoom link, right? The 1 o'clock Zoom link. All right. Sounds good.
Alrighty. Thanks, everyone. See you later.